Good evening and welcome to tonight's virtual Board of Education meeting for the Westerville City Schools. The Ohio Legislature approved emergency legislation allowing school boards to conduct meetings by teleconference or video conference, providing the meeting also can be observed by the public. In order to comply with this requirement, tonight's meeting is being streamed live and recorded on the board's YouTube channel. While operating under this virtual meeting environment, in the spirit of maintaining public participation, the board will accept written comments for specific agenda items as well as comments of a general nature. The board president will share more about this in his opening remarks. And the links to participate in this process are available on the board's virtual meeting webpage at www.wcsoh.org/virtualboe. While public participation will not be interactive during tonight's meeting, follow up with individuals submitting public comment will occur at a later time. Having received confirmation that the video is streaming correctly, the Board of Education President, Mr. Rick Velardo, will now call the meeting to order.
Thank you for attending tonight's virtual meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. You may follow along by going to wcsoh.org/virtualboe. From that page, you can also watch the meeting via YouTube livestream. Please note that this may not be perfect. Though providing an opportunity for public comment during the school board meetings is not a requirement, the Westerville City School District, W C S D, Board of Education believes it is an important part of its engagement with and accountability to the community. In response to public gathering restrictions now in place due to coronavirus, excuse me, and in the spirit of maintaining an opportunity for our public to participate in these virtual school board meetings, we are offering interested persons an opportunity to submit written public comment. During a typical W C S D Board of Education meeting, there are two opportunities for individuals to address the board. While functioning under this virtual meeting environment, the opportunity to submit public comment will open when the meeting begins at approximately 6:00 P. M. and close shortly after each public comment section is reached on the agenda. When submitting comments through the provided forms, we ask you to please keep your comments professional, avoid the use of inappropriate language, and refrain from identifying individuals by name in the event of a complaint. When you click on the link on the district website, you can submit written comments for the board's consideration, submit comments regarding a specific agenda item, and/or submit comment of a general nature. All comments submitted become a matter of public record and are subject to release under Ohio law and the Federal Freedom of Information Act. As with in-person public comments made during a traditional school board meeting, members reserve the right to respond immediately or withhold comments in order to conduct appropriate research and follow up with the speaker at a later time. Thank you in advance for your understanding and your cooperation. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yeah.
Ms. Davidson?
Yeah.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. We invite you to, if you are able to, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, I would like a motion and a second to temporarily suspend Board Policy P O zero one six nine point one, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, comment? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item Five. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the virtual regular meeting held Monday, April 6, 2020? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
And the other one will be the second. Thank you. Any discussion, comment? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Thank you very much. You may notice I'm moving through the agenda a little more slowly. That gives time for those working behind the scenes to toggle back and forth between the pictures and the agenda that we want the people to be able to. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, District Highlights and Recognitions. This evening, we have none. Agenda Item Seven, Reports. This evening, we have none. Moving on, Agenda Item Eight Point Zero One, Public Comments Pertaining to Action Items. And just a reminder that there are places on this virtual meeting for you to submit those comments, those questions, and we will get back to you, and those comments, questions will be posted on our website on an F A Q page. Agenda Item Nine, May I Have a Motion and a Second to Approve the Financial Report and Investments for February and March 2020? The financial reports lists all funds ending in February and March 2020. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshall. I believe you're going to speak to this.
Yes, thank you, President Velardo, members of the board. So today we are going over the month-end financials for both February and March. So February 29, 2020, General Fund Year-to-Date Receipts ended at 149.7 million. Year-to-date expenditures ended at 122.1 million and an unencumbered fund balance of 143.3 million. For all funds for February, we had year-to-date receipts of 198.9 million, year-to-date expenditures of 173.9 million, and an unencumbered fund balance for all funds of 197.5 million. So that's February. For the month ended March 31, 2020, for the General Fund, we had year-to-date receipts of 167,500,000, year-to-date expenditures of 137.5 million, and an unencumbered fund balance of 148.8 million. For all funds, now this is a big number. I want to remind the board that we did issue bonds in February, and we did have the proceeds deposited in the month of March. So our total year-to-date receipts were 333 million, 333.4 million. Year-to-date expenditures are 194.9 million, and our unencumbered ending balance for all funds for March 31st was 311.5 million. Again, that number is large because of the $103 million bond issue that we did issue the bonds for in February, and the proceeds were deposited in March.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. An important reminder to us. Exactly. Thank you. Board, any comments, questions for Ms. Marshall? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nussbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, Our Personnel Consent Agenda, 10.01 through 10.08. May I have a motion and a second for those?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Velardo, do you have anything to bring to us regarding this Personnel Consent Agenda?
Yes, I do. President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, I'd like to present your consideration, the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights in tonight's consent agenda are as follows. We have four retirements to bring to your attention. Vicki Keel Myers retiring from her secretary position at Walnut Springs Middle School. Many of you know her. She has provided Westerville with over 30 years, actually 32 years to be exact, of service to our community. Lynn Maslowski, another name that many of us are familiar with, is retiring from her Community Engagement Coordinator position with the district. She has provided the district with 27 years of service. We also have Thomas, so we're better known as Pat Quinn, retiring from his position with the Transportation Department. He has been with us for 12 years. And finally, Mary Jo Bock is retiring from her middle school teaching position over at Genoa Middle School, and she has provided the district with 20 years of service. And between those four people, that's 91 years of service that are retiring from our district. We also have two resignations from various classified positions and a recommendation for the employment of two new classified supplemental help positions. There's also the recommendation to the board for the reemployment of a number of classified contracts. I'd also like to make mention of Agenda Item 10.08. That provides for a calculation for payment for hourly employees who do not have a set contract time. I want to make sure that everyone realizes this is not an additional payment for these employees, and this amount is already included in the budget for the year. As you're aware, the governor has now closed schools for the remainder of the school year, and we will use this calculation for the remainder of the year. And finally, I'd like to talk about our Licensed Employment Section. We have the recommendation for four new teachers who are excited to be joining our district and a new elementary assistant principal, Ms. Angela Ballinger, will be joining us in splitting her time between Faust and Wilder. She is bringing a wealth of teaching and leadership experience to these schools and to the district as a whole. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hopkins. Would anyone like to address any of those Personnel Consent Agenda Items?
Yes. The retirees, you know that those are four incredible people. And each one of them, Dr. Hopkins, as you said their name, I could picture them in front of me. They have all made a huge impact on this school district. I particularly want to call out Lynn Maslowski, since Lynn has had so much to do with all of the lives of those of us on the board as she worked so uncomplainingly to take picture after picture after picture and write all of those resolutions and do all of the incredible work she does to engage with the individuals in our community. But all four of those people are well-known, well-loved, and will be missed.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else like to address any of that? Hearing none, thank you. I concur with those sentiments. Some really good people. And just a quick shout out for Lynn as well. Anyone that can take a picture of this group and make them look halfway good is clearly a solid photographer. I speak for myself, of course, not the group. Yes, of course. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Nussbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Hopkins. Moving on to Agenda Item Eleven, Old Business. We have none at this time. Agenda Item Twelve, New Business. We have several readings. First is Policy 12.01. It's a first reading, Graduation Requirements, Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. And I believe, Mr. Reeves, you are here and going to share a little bit with us?
President Velardo, it's my understanding Mr. Reeves had technical difficulties, and so he's going to make the meeting. So I will do my best to summarize the policy. As you know, legislators with support from O D E change graduation requirements. This policy puts in place the new state requirements that begin effective and then have changed again with the class of 23. Essentially, they diminish the importance of the state test, the number of tests the kids take, and add some other components to graduation. I think it provides greater flexibility, shows, provides multiple pathways for kids to meet graduation requirements and align those requirements with their aspirations. So I'd recommend your consideration for passing. I think the policy will be followed closely on its heels with some guidelines that we have to put in place as well.
Thank you very much. And we're, of course, not voting on this. It's just the first reading. Anyone have anything to share at this particular moment?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
I'm going to pipe in real quick because I just got text from Reeves. He's in, so I'm off the hook. He's in.
I don't want to ask anymore. I do have a couple of questions, just for clarity, probably more for my own clarity than anybody else's. I was looking on, I think it's page three of the policy, and we talk about the Phys Ed waiver. Okay, that's fine. Then that's a major heading. And then we go down a few lines, paragraph or so, and it says credit may be earned by completing coursework, testing out of or demonstrating mastery of course content, or pursuing one or more educational options in accordance with the center's credit flexibility program. Then it talks about earning post-secondary institution credit and has some additional information. Then we go to another bolded piece that says state graduation requirements. My questions are all in that chunk between the bold heading of the Phys Ed waiver and the bold heading of state graduation requirements. What I'm wondering, number one, is where the policy talks about credit may be earned by, and it lists those three things, then talks about college credit plus and so forth. Is that about the P E stuff? Or are we missing another bold heading in there somewhere? Because it seemed to me to address a heck of a lot more than just Phys Ed. So that was one question. Second question is, in that section of credit may be earned by, and it lists three items. Item number three says pursuing one or more educational options in accordance with the center's credit flexibility program. I must have missed it somewhere. I'm not sure what the center is. When we talk about the center's credit flex program, I've missed that somehow. And then the third question in that chunk is when we talk about, the language says every high school may permit students below the ninth grade to take advanced coursework for credit. This work shall count toward the graduation requirements if it was both taught by a person who possesses a license or certificate issued under state law that is valid for teaching high school and to designated by the board as meeting the high school curriculum requirements. When I read this, my first thought was this actually suggests that I could have somebody who may not be an employee of the district but has a license to teach high school, teach a course for me, and then it would have to come, and the board would approve it. I felt it wasn't clear about how that was going to work. So those are my three biggies. And hopefully, they made some sense. If not, I can explain them again or maybe explain them one by one. Scott, what do you have to say?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I had trouble getting in. Dr. Kellogg, I should have left you on the hook to answer these.
Yeah.
No, the sentence is probably poor wording, and I might change that in number three of earning credit, that wording. And that's just saying, here are the different ways a kid can earn credit. And these are how students have been able to earn credit in our district since we instituted credit flex. And this was around my first or second year, so we're talking almost a decade. So a student can test out of a course. That is a credit flex provision that a student can do. We have students do that annually. We don't have very many, but we do have students that will take an exam, and the result of their exam will end up being their final grade. Completing coursework, testing out, or, and they separated for a student to test out, they have got to complete the credit flex application. So number two and number three are pretty much the same for us. I don't know why it says the center. We're the organization. It's by completing and being approved by our credit flex process. I can clean that up, that language between now and the next reading, because it shouldn't, nice catch, it shouldn't say that. It's our credit flex policy and procedure. And we have, we probably hand out anywhere from 200 to 300 credits annually through credit flex.
So when we're looking at the cleanup piece, my question was about the credit flex and so forth. I'm aware that we do that. I think it's dandy. My question was, the way the policy is shaped, when you go back to clean it up a little bit, the way the policy is shaped, the way it's written, there's the bold remark or the bold statement about the physical education waiver. Then all of those pieces, I believe, fall under that. I think we need another bold thing, because right now it looks like all the credit flex stuff and all those components fall under the heading of the physical education waiver.
Yeah, I think the credit may be earned by itself should be a bolded caption.
Yeah, so we'll just take a look at that, if you would, before it comes back.
Yep.
Then the other question I had was about the counting work for credit. How that occurs, the way it is worded now, it's basically anybody with a high school certificate could teach a kid a course, then that would come for us to approve. That is not what we mean.
And tell me exactly where?
It is on page three, and I tell you what, rather than taking everybody's time with this, if you want, I'd be happy to.
Because I think the intent is a student below grade nine can earn high school credit. We have a ton that do. Spanish one, algebra one, geometry, some of those kids. For that to count, it, one, has to be our board-approved coursework for high school credit, and it has to be a teacher licensed to teach. Obviously, all our teachers have to be licensed to teach. Who can, their license allows them to teach that course. Some middle school teachers could not teach that course. You have to have the right license to teach that course. Now theoretically, they don't have to be our teachers, because through our credit flex process, we have some students who have earned a credit flex outside of the scope of our organization, which they have the legal right to do. So we can, you and I can massage this to how you, and we can make that be more appropriate to what our intent is.
Are you all comfortable if I work with Scott? And Scott, I apologize that you didn't jump out at me until today. And oh gee, and I should have called you about it before. Are you all comfortable if we work on that? I'm not suggesting changing the intent. I just want to clean up some of the language a little bit in that section.
I'm good with that. Are you all okay with that? Okay, okay.
And I think it's probably number one you have the most issue with, the language. Because number two is just, it's got to be a designated board-approved course, which, yeah.
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Yep.
And it'll be the same thing. We'll just have a little different wording here and there.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
And as Dr. Kellogg had shared, this is just, it's almost verbatim to the state law of the new graduation requirements. We didn't add any bells, whistles, or customizations, and we probably are very, very close. The, what we can design are our local graduation seals. And we are very, very close to the language. And Nancy, if you want to review those, I know you have before as liaison. If you want to review those one more time, we can. So we're very, very close with that as well.
Great. Thank you both for the good discussion. We'll just wait to hear back. Moving on to Agenda Item 12.02, Mr. Reeves, I think you'll speak to this as well briefly. Policy 5460.02, Students at Risk of Not Qualifying for a High School Diploma?
Yep. One of the provisions that came out in the last budget bill was also, we were required to have a mechanism and a process and procedures for identifying students who may be at risk of not graduating from high school. Not too different in alignment from the work that we have always done. It just wasn't codified in policy. And so in consultation multiple times with our academic affairs team, with our principals and with colleagues around 270, what we really fleshed out was students who were at risk of not graduating were behind their cohort in credits. They had fallen behind. They didn't, after their first year, achieve five credits, or after their second year, achieve 10 credits and had fallen behind. And either play catch-up at school, play catch-up in summer school, or play catch-up at the A E C. So we didn't do the attendance piece because we have a policy for chronic and habitual truancy and things that we do and outline with them. So we felt that that was covered. A second big piece in conversation with a lot of districts around were the discipline piece. Kids who were maybe overwhelmingly disciplined or something like that. But what we found, it was they were on the same list. So we were duplicating efforts, because the kids who were disciplined to the point where it was causing them to be credit deficient, the credit deficient is what we needed to fix. Yeah, the behavior, and sometimes maturity takes care of that. Or there might have been a kid who has been disciplined a couple of times but is on track to graduate. We have those. And so that, so we landed at basically the basic tenet of a student is not with their cohort and has fallen behind in their credit. As a first identifier, the second identifier, because you can reach back below high school incoming, is that we hear from time to time that we have eighth-grade students that may not be as prepared as we'd like them to be coming in. And so students who come into ninth grade from eighth grade, who will have met our retention criteria, because that's not something that we probably do in our district, is retain kids and make them repeat multiple grades, especially at the middle level. And so students from eighth grade coming into ninth grade who might have failed a course or two in the corps that have met the requirements of retention would be also someone we would identify as coming into high school potentially at risk of not graduating. And let's get that machine and start working with them right from the start of their high school career. So those are two requirements. And then there's a litany of interventions that we can employ in a district our size and complexity has the ability, based on the need of the individual kid, to employ a variety of those. And we do, and these are things that we do now.
And I think some of this is coming down from some state legislature requirements, right? But we are just putting them into code. Some of it's we're already practicing. And I personally would like to emphasize or put out for public knowledge that this last example, somebody going from eight to nine who is struggling, we are trying to catch that person early in the situation. And I commend that a lot, because you hear the struggles of students from nine to 10 then, and from 10 to 11. And I love the fact that we're saying, okay, it's some struggles in the middle. Let's make sure you have some quality supports as you enter into high.
And kind of an ancillary piece of this, that we are, that every student in high school beginning next year by the same law is required to do, every single one of our high school kids is required to have a graduation plan that they, in consultation with their parents, with their teachers, administrators, and themselves are required to have. So that's going to be a big machine that we are rolling out next year. The interventions for these students would also become a part of their graduation plan. And something that we will visit with them regularly, and their parents would have an integral role in determining what needs their student, what needs are to get them back on track to graduate.
Great. Thank you very much, Scott. And anybody else have any questions, comments at this point? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Scott. Moving on, Agenda Item 12.03, First Reading, Revised Courses of Study, Journalism 1, 2, 3. It's just a first reading. John, anything you wanted to highlight in these courses, et cetera?
Nothing new in these. These are just on our normal sequence of revision periodically. These came up for revision. Of course, we view with our teachers and make their revisions and then adopt materials to support that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would assume then 12.04 is also a first reading, New Course of Study, Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning and Advanced Quantitative Reasoning Course. See, that was not even easy for me just to read the description of that particular course, but it sounds like something that's pretty exciting. Yes, Superintendent Kellogg?
Yeah. I wish they'd had this course when I was in high school. It's basically a syllabus for a course we've put together in collaboration with universities to make sure kids who are coming through this are more prepared for collegiate math when they get there.
That's awesome. I, believe me, I wish I had that as well in the transition. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes.
So in offering this new course, will we not be offering something that we currently have?
No, this is a course that will be scheduled based on demand as elective math course. So if, if the high schools are able to staff it with the staff they have, then we'll staff it. So it may pull from a different course, but it's not going to be replacing the course. And I'm going to verify that because Jen Knapp is texting me at the same time. It is a fourth year math course is the other piece of that. So it's above and beyond the, the three math requirement.
And Mrs. Davidson, to your point, it would most likely pull from financial algebra as an alternative for a fourth year course.
Thanks, Jen. I should have piped you in earlier.
Any other questions at this point? Thank you very much. Hearing none. 12.05, first reading a new resource, new resources for advanced placement courses. AP World History and AP Calculus. Jen, if you're still there, Ms. Knapp, if you're still there, it looks like these are new resources for these courses, not, obviously not new courses, correct?
That is correct. They are just updated resources. AP Statistics is a pretty low cost. It's about $6,000. They're asking for just class sets of resources. And then with AP World, they'll be asking for a book for every student. AP World has gone through some changing in their test format over the past several years. And so the, the teachers have been looking for about three years for the best fit, and they feel like they've finally found it.
Great. Thank you. Just to clarify, Ms. Knapp, you said AP Statistics. Did you mean AP Calculus or is this a misprint on my agenda?
It is AP Calculus. I've been staring at the FY budget, and so AP Statistics will be coming your way next year. My apologies.
No, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I had it correct here. Thank you very much for chiming in. Any questions on any of that, folks?
I don't have a question, but just a quick comment.
Yes.
I was on the virtual meeting with curriculum council, high school curriculum council, when these were all discussed, and they were approved by curriculum council, as you would expect, or they wouldn't have shown up for us. But what I wanted to point out is the extensive amount of time that has gone into the selection of the resources and the development of these courses of study. These are not quickly done, and the materials are not selected rapidly. These are done with a substantial amount of engagement of the faculty who are involved and a substantial amount of time to make sure that the decisions are right.
Thank you very much for pointing that out. That's, people do a lot of work behind the scenes picking curriculum and Chin, and, and the willingness to change curriculum to make it better is something we applaud, and thank, thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments, questions at this point? Thank you very much. Hearing none. Moving on to agenda item 13, 13.01, donations. May I have a motion and a second to receive these donations?
So moved.
Second, Dr. Nestor Baker, did you second?
I did. Yes.
You did? Okay, or did, it's okay. Thank you. I am, we are bowled over by the supportive nature of this community within the schools and, and, and within the greater Westerville community. We are looking at approximately two pages of donations. People helping to pay off unplugged lunch balances, people making donations, people working with our music, our fine ed departments, people doing donations in lieu of fundraisers, which I assume some of this, we couldn't do the fundraiser because of the situation that we're in, and people decided I'm going to contribute anyway. I am, and I think we are absolutely deeply touched by the depth of passion in this community. So it is beyond thank you, but let me say on behalf of the board and administration, absolutely thank you for how you are lifting up the community of kids that you are supporting. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Resolution, agenda item, sorry, 13.02. May I have a motion and a second for a resolution settlement agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item 13.03, student handbooks for school year 2020 through 2021. And may I have a motion and a second to approve these?
So moved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Altman. Do we have any questions, comments on these handbooks?
I just wondered if somebody could give us the brief overview of how the handbooks are reviewed and how changes come to it.
Great.
Great question. So first of all, I'd let you know that there were no changes this year, which is phenomenally a first. Deb Meisner, if I'm looking at the right document, works on this and involves other people as part of that. I can have her, we can put a, a brief note in the Friday update for the board if you want more information regarding the development of the handbook. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, just that they're reviewed annually. I mean, that's our standard practice. And it just happens that this year there aren't changes. There often are changes.
I think, Ms. Altman, you're, you're, yeah, I think you're almost talking about maybe just sharing something in some form with the public on how this is done, that, that they are reviewed and so on. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
They are reviewed every year.
Yeah.
There's a committee that does it every year that takes a look at it to see if changes need to be made. So that it is stayed on top of it. It's not just something that, oh gosh, here we are. It's April. Let's drop this out and approve it again. It is looked at every year by a group of people.
There are administrators, parents on there, all part of the process that review it, make recommendations for changes. Then there's also any legislative changes that impact it. And that's, as it's been said, that there's several meetings, and it's put together and moved forward to the board. So we do this annually. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Altman. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 13.04, a resolution regarding distance learning. May I have a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kellogg, do you want to just kind of summarize? Would you like to speak to this for a moment?
Yeah, so similar, this is a resolution that's similar to what we act on each year for Blizzard bags. What the legislators did was they, they allowed boards of education to pass a resolution regarding distance learning that parallels what we do with Blizzard bags in the past. So the limit on Blizzard bags was to three days. This resolution allows us to extend the distance learning piece that we've put in place through what is now going to be the end of the school year. That framework, that's an attachment to the resolution, has gone out to teachers and families to help define what the expectations are during this time period. So this basically just allows us to continue the practice of distance learning through the remainder of the school year.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone have a question, comment at this time? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item 13.05. May I have a motion and a second to approve a resolution regarding 2019 through 2020, teacher evaluations? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, and I believe Dr. Hopkins, you are going to share a little bit about this?
Certainly. As you know, revisions to the state legislature and subsequent guidance from the Ohio Department of Education now allows boards of education to exempt teacher evaluations this year due to the school closures. This resolution exempts a majority of our teachers from evaluations due to the fact that they are either impractical or impossible to complete. We'd like the board to know that we've worked very closely with the WEA and all other boards to ensure that all bargaining units were aware of this and certainly are agreeable to the resolution as it is currently stated.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, any question, comments at this time? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item 13.06. May I have a motion and a second for a resolution approving the program of requirements, design stage submission, and locally funded initiative improvements, MOU, for the new elementary school included in the ELPP project? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Now, Mr. Dorn, would you explain what I just read, please, to us?
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Valardo, Vice President Bell, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. The resolution presented here is for the approval of the program of requirements, which would be what we're putting into a school building and the schematic design, which is the conception phase of the project. So the approval of those planning phases for the new elementary school project down in the Minerva Park area. The design development, which is more detailed and construction document phases, will follow at a future board meeting. As this project is part of our expedited local partnership program project with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, it is required for the board to approve each phase of the design. The design first goes to the OCC's Regional Program Consultant for Review for Compliance with the Ohio Facility Construction Commission's Ohio School Design Manual and Identification of Locally Funded Initiatives before coming to the board for your approval. This project has met the OCC standards and is now before you, and it is being recommended that the board approve the program of requirements and schematic design stage submission for the new elementary school project. Authorize the superintendent and treasurer to sign the locally funded initiative memorandum of understanding, a document that was completed by the OCC's Regional Program Consultant for the program of requirements and schematic design stage submission for the new elementary school project, and authorize the design team to continue the, with preparation of the design development stage for the new, new elementary school.
You know, Mr. Dorn, sometimes people complain that the medical field has a whole language, and it's hard to understand. Sometimes we in education get caught up in these abbreviations, shall we say, or initials. Thank you for that explanation. This allows us to move forward with the process for our elementary school on the southern end of the district.
That is correct. We've met the standard, we've met specific standards for this point in time by the Ohio Facility Construction Commission.
Great, great. And that's good news to hear as well. Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, please call the roll.
President Valarda, can you help me out? I missed who seconded that motion.
Nancy Nestor Baker did.
Nancy, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 13.07, a motion to approve a resolution regarding superintendent and treasurer authority. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Marshall, I think you're going to explain this a little bit because there are financial implications for it. Is that correct?
Yes, so President Valarda, members of the board, this is a resolution that was recommended to us by our legal counsel, Bricker and Eckler. This is to allow us to waive the requirement, basically in the purchasing policy that we have for receiving several quotes on products when it's an emergency purchase because of the emergency that the district's in, because of the COVID-19 and this closure of schools. This is, the only thing this would apply to would be in those instances where we are required to get three quotes unless fewer are available. This would give us the opportunity to waive that requirement should we need to do so for emergency reasons. I don't see us needing to use this necessarily, but in case the circumstance does come up, we'll have that authority to do so.
Awesome. Thank you for that explanation, Ms. Marshall. Anyone have a question or a comment?
I do.
Yes.
So, Ms. Marshall, if this is exercised, will we be notified, the board?
We absolutely can notify the board, and we can report to the board in the following month, if you'd prefer, if we need to exercise this for any reason.
Okay.
That work?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item 13, 13.08, summer school fee recommended reductions due to impact of COVID-19 on Westerville City Schools families. I, I think, Dr. Kel, oh, may I have a motion and a second? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kellogg or Ms. Marshall, would one of you just flesh that out for us a little bit?
Sure, I can. This, in the past, for our high school credit recovery program, we've charged, I think it's a hundred dollars per credit for students who are repeating a course. That program is typically involved transportation of secondary students because they've had an in-class component as well. Given the governor's order and what we're seeing, projecting for the summer, we don't anticipate being able to offer summer school in the same fashion. So it'll be a distance learning piece, which saves us some money. So we're passing that, that, that savings on to the customer, cutting the cost for the summer school program according to the document.
Great, thank you. Anyone have question, comment, concern to share? Hearing none. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valarda?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, for that explanation. Moving on to agenda item 14, public comments. Remind you that there is a link for you to submit some comments, and someone will get back to you with a resolution, a comment, a question, an answer for you. Moving on to agenda item 15.01. Let me quickly say that before board comments, let me say that we all know by now that the governor has extended the closure of schools through the end of this academic year. I always like to say that for our future students, it's for this academic year. And that is hard and sad, and I think many of us would say perhaps necessary. And we are feeling for some of our students. And we are feeling for some of our students who who are missing some pretty memorable times and certainly missing a lot of their friends. But, uh, Dr. Kellogg, would you just flesh out implications for that as you see it at this moment in time since we were just told a few hours ago?
Sure, so in accordance with the Governor's order, whereas our buildings are closed, teaching and learning will still carry on per the resolution you all passed tonight and where we've evolved in the last several weeks as a district from traditional school district to what is now effectively a distance learning institution. So we'll continue in that process to close out the school year. The other piece of that for parents will be the grading document we put out. I think we'll spell out how that will close out the school year in terms of grading. Unfortunately, I think this means that our traditional graduation date for Memorial Day weekend will be impacted by that decision. I will need additional information and clarification as what does it mean for us in regard to the summer? As you know, we have an alternative date for graduation if we're able to to do that under the Governor's leadership for late June. We are looking at and working with the Board on senior recognition opportunities we can still do and perhaps some other graduation style events for that Memorial Day weekend. So look for more information coming from that in in the next week or so. I'm unsure of what this means for summer school. You passed a resolution tonight relative to ninth through twelfth grade, which we have online curriculum that we can deliver those courses specifically. For K eight, we've traditionally done an intervention and an extension program. I'm not sure what that means at this point in terms of running those programs. So we'll have to wait for clarification on that. And still not completely sure what this means for the start of school, next school year. I think that's still a gray area as well. What does that look like coming back? So it gives clarity for the remainder of this school year and still provide some unshornness about everything after that moving forward. But a a big shout out to our staff across the system for what they've been doing in shifting gears in the way we operate on all kinds of fronts, from food service to technology to teaching and learning. People have done just yeoman's work to get us where we're at and we'll continue to to refine how we do this and get better along the way as as we as we face this this new set of situations. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I think there's probably as much unknown now as there was before the order.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Well, I I didn't ask you this all ahead of time. Last time I suggested Board comments in in alphabetical order, if that's okay. Ms. Altman, that means that means we will begin with you. Do you? Do you have any comments to share this evening?
Well, as usual, I just want to thank everyone who's been working to service our kids. You know, I think a lot about all the kids out there. I think the vast, vast, vast majority of kids we've made contact with, my understanding is maybe just a tiny handful of kids that we're still tracking down. But I think there's just been lots of work by many people to do that and make sure kids are okay and learning. And so I really appreciate all of that. And I'm looking forward to finding ways to celebrate our graduates. I they've put in all these years of work and I know that we'll do something to honor that. So thank you for that. And I I also have to say, you know, my heart goes out a little bit to the eighth graders and the fifth graders who are switching buildings. And they didn't realize that they wouldn't be going back, especially, you know, in in those grades, kids tend to scatter off to different schools. So they're unexpectedly leaving some friends. But hoping we can find some ways to help them connect across the district as they enter middle school and high school next year, too. So anyway, appreciate all the work and I know there's lots to come.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Altman. Vice President Bell, alphabetically, you're up.
Um, I would like to thank all of the staff for all of the hard work that they have been putting in. Food service, the distribution of, you know, well over a thousand Chromebooks and hotspots for students so that they could have access to technology at home. So we want to thank them for all of that work. Also want to especially thank again our community partners that were have been so kind and generous. And we see that in the list of donations that were made to the district here as we draw, well, now the end of when the the buildings are closed anyway. So we certainly want to thank our community partners. And thank you to really all the parents and families in the district for understanding that this is, it's an unprecedented time that we are living through. These are circumstances that we had no way of foreseeing. So please be patient with us. We're working our way through and trying to do the best we can for our students, staff and families. And so together we will be able to get through this. And we certainly want to work together to do something special to honor the seniors that will be graduating this year. And it's tonight at what time? Is it eight o'clock?
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty. At all of the, all of the athletic directors will be turning on the stadium lights at all of the buildings as a way of recognizing our graduating seniors. And so we just want them to know how much we truly love them and appreciate them. So thank you all.
Thank you, Vice President Bell. Alphabetically, if I'm doing this correctly, Mrs. Davidson, I think you are up.
Thank you, Rick. And it's so hard to go after Jen and Vaughn when they've covered just about everything. So, yes, thank you so much to our staff and our our community partners. Also, our parents who have become teachers now and realize how difficult this journey truly is. I can't imagine working full time and having little ones running around. So I think about that one a lot. I also, you know, besides the seniors who so important and any of our children transitioning, I'm thinking about our retirees who are not going to have a chance to say goodbye to some of these kids and their coworkers and that, you know, that's a little heartbreaking. So, you know, I just think a lot about all those people and grateful for all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yeah, it's really hard to be the last one in the row, isn't it? I also want to thank everyone. I am so deeply grateful for all of our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our food service, our transportation, our custodial, everyone involved. This is, as Vaughn said, unprecedented, and I know we use that word a lot. But what is so incredibly wonderful is the magnitude of effort that is being put forth by all the people who are part of Westerville City Schools to make this work, to make this a sound educational opportunity in many ways for our students. You know, I talk to, I read, I pay close attention to what our teachers are saying, what our parents are saying, what our kids are saying about how this is going. And this kind of instruction is quantitatively and qualitatively different. And that means that everyone had to retool both their practices and their expectations about what those practices would look like. So we are all working together as we figure out those vast differences. And it can work, and we are seeing that it does work in so many ways. And we do have a long way to go. But our children are getting a quality education still. They are getting a different type of that quality education. And it's possible because of the incredible efforts that go on all across this district every day, every night, every weekend. And I am just blown away by what's happened here. I'm also blown away by the response from our community, from Neighborhood Bridges to the Education Foundation, to everyone involved in wanting to help this district, help its children. And it's just affirming in so many ways. So while we're all facing something that is at its heart ugly, in so many ways, we are making something beautiful from it. That is incredible. So thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you, Dr. Nestor Baker. And I concur with all that has been said. And mostly I concur that it's tough to go last because you all have said all of the good things. But I will, I will affirm, Ms. Altman, you said something that I had not thought about until recently. I obviously am. I I have a senior, so I'm thinking about all of kind of that piece. But somebody mentioned, yeah, but what about the fifth grade's clap outs? And I had forgotten what a big deal clapping out those fifth graders is in the elementary school. I thought, oh, my goodness, that that was, that was a highlight. Like, my kids thought that that was awesome. And I just, I just, I I hope that we can continue to brainstorm ways to affirm our students and, yes, absolutely affirm, for example, the retirees that who have given so much. And for some of them, it'll be very hard not to go back in that building and to hug that 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 child, that student, especially the one who maybe had the most difficulty. And and they saw him over the line. That's a big deal. And I have talked to enough teachers lately. I've talked to enough of our staff lately that some of this is actually, this is pretty hard on them. And there's and there's some sadness for them. So I I think that is important to recognize. Mr. Bell, Vice President Bell, already acknowledged the lighting of the stadiums tonight, well, lighting the stadium lights tonight at eight twenty. And the reason for that is military time is twenty twenty at eight twenty. That's why they're doing it, the class of twenty twenty. And I think going to light it, correct, for twenty minutes and twenty seconds. I believe that is, that is the charge. So I go go outside. I I I hope it's dark enough you can see that. That would be, that would be really good. And I will affirm, I think all of you touched on, we are we are really thinking hard and talking to people in the community about what can we do to celebrate, affirm and provide moments of joy for our seniors. Don't know what graduation is going to look like now. And and now today, really don't know what graduation is going to look like. Lord willing or willing, we can still have something like that. But the Westerville community, I believe, really wants to affirm these students and send them off into work, college or military career with moments of joy, affirmation and a memory that maybe if we had traditional graduation, they wouldn't otherwise have. So that's what I know my colleagues on the Board and I know very well the executive team and leadership team is working on as well. So thank you for joining us in this virtual Board of Education meeting. Ms. Marshall or Dr. Kellogg, do you have any anything else you would like to add? I know you've shared some already, don't have to, but is there anything you'd like to add? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you all very.
I did just want to thank the Board for your support during this time. I think you guys have been very just supportive and appreciate the hard work that you've been doing too behind the scenes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Agenda Item sixteen, dates, times, locations of next meeting. Sixteen oh one, the Board will meet in regular session on Monday, May four, six P M. It says at the Early Learning Center, but probably not at the Early Learning Center, May eighteen, in the same location. And should the Governor extend the stay-at-home order, parentheses, he did. These will likely be virtual meetings, so stay tuned on how we provide that. And moving on Agenda Item seventeen point zero one, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
And with my knuckles, I hit my ping pong table and say, yes, we are adjourned.
Board members, thank you. I would ask you to please hold as we stop the YouTube live stream.